Okay, welcome everyone. We'll call our meeting to order and rise for the Pudge of Allegiance, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kate. Roll call.
Here.
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 Thank you. Where is Peter? Do we know?
I'm gonna try to text him.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we're at our audience of citizens and I see Madam Chair in the audience. I know you have another meeting downstairs, correct? You wanna, would you like to come up? And if you, if you do want to talk to us, if you don't, if you do, then maybe you can make it to your meeting. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
My name is Joan Beely. I'm a registrar here at the town of Berlin, counterpart Christie Miano. We hate to be the-
And chairwoman of Planning and Zoning, which is the meeting that is downstairs or a special meeting.
The fun just never stops.
Yes, that's right. Exactly, exactly.
Thank you for, for hearing us out. I just want to address the registrar of voters, if I may, and I hate to be the harbinger of, hey, watch out, you know, the sky is falling, but here I come right at you. With early voting, we had an estimate as far as our pay, pay structure was concerned and what it was gonna do to our budget as registrars. I'm trying to lean into the microphone, okay?
Thank you.
Um, and it wasn't until yesterday's election that it kind of really rocked our world, and we want to share it with you, okay? What we did was we took the hours that we were working as of basically February 10th, which is just about the middle of the cycle when things started to step up with early voting. And we estimated the hours. We kept track, as you had wanted, of the hours that we had worked. And basically, using a 20-hour work week, which is registrars who are supposed to be part-time, so we're only 20 hours, anything over, I was looking at as far as needing to be compensated. This was work that was being done, needs to be compensated. So that in mind, between February 10th and ending with April 5th, which has not yet happened, but because we had the election date yesterday, I know what we worked today and what we're gonna work tomorrow, we are looking at an overage of 118.35 hours unpaid. So using the manager's base pay, not overtime or time and a half or anything else, so using the hourly pay that the town manager had, had settled for us, which was 36.55 an hour, you're looking at $4,325.69 for the overage hours. Now, I realize that a stipend is to be paid and that's supposed to cover us, and that's $2,500. That being said, we still have a difference of $1,825.69 per registrar, and we're just at April 5th. We're not even to the referendum and to the end of June. So I'm just, I'm putting this out here because I, I can't stress to you guys enough, or even to the Board of Finance, if they're out there, what this is doing to the registrar's budget and what it's doing to the workload. So I just want to bring it to your attention. I'm not sure how the council's gonna address it, but there is gonna be unpaid hours going into the end of June. Then, moving forward, I realized that a stipend has been laid out because everyone's in flux about what are registrars really do? They're only 20 hours, blah, 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 they're part-time. We understand that. But registrars work on an off-schedule year. In other words, our term doesn't start till January. Your budget starts in July. So let's just say I get hit by a bus or something like that, God forbid. But if the stipend that's being proposed for payment runs till the end of June next year, and my term is up January 5th or 6th, and somebody else walks in, am I not working to do somebody, to get somebody else the benefit? In other words, I'm not being paid by the end of December, which is the end of our term. Where our term is gonna overlap with the fiscal year. It's really, it's out of sync, but that's something I'd like for you to think about. I'm not sure how to fix that. But that's something I wanted to bring to you, we wanted to bring to your attention, okay?
But so your term, term is up May 1st, right?
No, it's
The registers go on the ballot in November and they take office in January.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. So it's a calendar year, yeah. A calendar year, yeah.
2024 year.
Yeah.
And our, and it's off of the work we're doing.
Right.
I mean, I mean, obviously, Christie and I, I believe, would like to continue as registrars. However, should something happen, I mean, that compensation, I think, would have to stay with the calendar year as opposed to that. But again, that's something we're drawing to your attention. I'm not sure how to adjust it or fix it, or to plan moving forward. And then I think I wanted to share, because I know your time is short here. Did you want to say anything else about the hours?
Well, it was about the way it's being put forward for this budget year. I didn't see it broken down to see the raise that is usually in our salary versus the stipend being proposed. So that's another thing, is that we're stipend and we're not getting any raise or recognition for that?
But I think in the budget documents, they put it under wages. They didn't break it out into a stipend, which is what the Board of Finance wanted, and if I'm misspeaking, the members of the Board of Finance could correct me now or after we're done, but so I think, and I don't know, tonight, and that was a question I had about what you said, because it is under wages, so would, how do we, how do we add stipend in, or does it matter at this point? Because it just, I think, I think it's, I think it's in the wages. Yeah, George, if, if, you gotta, you gotta come up, yeah, come on up and just, yeah, if you can answer it, that's great. Yes, yes. Yeah, that, yeah, that's fine.
We looked at it and said that there are dollars in there.
Yeah.
We sort of did some back calculation and said, why are we paying it in a stipend? Let's just pay it as part of the hourly wage.
Okay.
And I, do you remember the number, Roche? I don't remember the number, but instead of having them paid for 1,040 hours, be up that number, okay? God, what was it? I think we went to something like 1,500 hours. I think we went to 25 hours a week, basically, and said, pay them at, pay them for 25 hours a week, so that they'd get that amount of money on a weekly basis. And we also said to embed in there like a 3% raise, because that was sort of the averages that are being kicked in. And when you did that, that math, those dollars are in the budget. But eventually, originally, they were gonna be paid as a stipend, but now we're, I was advocating to Roche, and you agreed at the time, to pay it out hourly and increase their hourly from 20 to 25. And then for them to continue doing their bookkeeping, but at least they'd be getting it as they go along, eliminates the issue about, I'm not gonna be here in January 6th, maybe, they would have been getting dollars for the, you know, majority of the hours they work. And then we would see what happens, because we don't know what's gonna transpire, you know, in terms of, you know, how much are you working in July, in August, whatever, are you, you know, can you have some downtime? Do you really need to work 20 hours a week in July and in August? I don't know the answer to that. But, and we don't have any historical basis to say, that's what you did either.
Right.
So we need some more factual information to be able to understand it. We also indicated that, you know, this is a presidential election. Presidential election, we would imagine, takes a lot more effort than a municipal election, so
Sure.
That 25 hours, based on what you guys say, that may not be 25 next year. It might be slightly less, because we would anticipate you would have to work a lot less. That's the conversation we had. I don't know what was settled on.
But, well, that, I guess that's my question. We're, we have a budget in front of us, and what, what did the Board of Finance send, send to us?
How it's paid. The dollars are in the budget to do what I said. Or you could pay it out as a stipend at some point in time. That was the original concept.
Well, who's gonna make that decision if you, if you guys didn't make it?
It don't work for me, so.
Well, they don't, they, well, we pay them now. I mean, I know they work for the registrar, but they, the State, Secretary of State, they're not gonna make the decision.
Money's in there.
Yeah, the money's there, for what we talked about.
Should document it, get everybody in agreement that that's what we're gonna do, or we're gonna do this other way. This doesn't change the money from-
Right, okay, so, all right, so, yes, Kevin, please, yes. Yeah, no, so with our dilemma, that's okay. No, no, it's okay, no, reminds, no, that's-
Important question.
Yeah, that was a question we need to work out. Yeah, no, 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 it's fine. So-
Just to clarify a couple of things. While I was sitting back, I did look. The stipend for this one is in the payroll. It will be in their bank account on Friday. It's already been-
And that's for this year? Yeah, we, right.
That's already done.
Gotcha.
The stipend for next year can be paid whatever frequency is determined.
Okay.
So, we have people who are paid a stipend every pay cycle.
Okay.
They get an amount.
Yeah.
Or a particular position.
Right.
And it's an additional amount of money in their paycheck. Comes in in one lump sum, if you will, to the direct deposit to their bank account. We have other people who are paid a stipend once a year.
Okay.
It could be done quarterly.
Break it up.
At the end of an election. It could be done whatever frequency. In fact, the conversation we've had is, how would you like it? Some feedback has been, I'd like it in every paycheck, so it's like a salary. It would come in and it would be received. That's fine.
Can I ask, Kevin? So are they aware, ladies, that you were getting this 20, the $2,500 stipend for this?
We're aware, but it doesn't meet the hours work. It's half the amount.
Okay, I understand, but I just want to make sure that you were aware that this was getting deposited into your accounts this Friday, okay?
I guess, in, in light of my ignorance, I would say that I was aware that there was a stipend that was gonna be for, up until the end of June. However, I guess it was never solidified or clarified as to exactly when it was all gonna transpire, or how it was gonna transpire. It seemed like everything was in motion, which walked us in flux.
Please don't do that. I had the conversation with both of you on Thursday in your office. So you're gonna have this 2,500 in your next paycheck. Now you're saying something else, why?
No, I'm not saying anything else, but I am saying, okay, well, then let's really clarify the matter. The matter was on Thursday, right before the holiday. It was around 4 o'clock, and we were expecting to be emailed to have a meeting with you, to have a conversation. We had been told by different people had, as Roche reached out to you. And we were like, no, he hasn't. And they said, oh, well, things have been decided and he's gonna reach out to you. You can look up to the heavens all you want, but I'm just saying what happened. So when I saw you on Thursday, I'm the one who said, what's going on? So I opened the conversation with you, and you mentioned the stipend. Until that, or how it was gonna be paid, or when it's gonna be paid, so let's, let's, let's be careful here, okay?
Did I also tell you that, both of you, that you'll be paid, if that's your preference, right throughout the year, 26 pages, the 10,000?
That's again, the day before Good Friday. Yes, that's what you said, that Thursday.
So for purposes of what you're going, the money's in the budget?
Yeah.
The money would be received, and if it's in every paycheck as a stipend, the pay stub would show it separated, but the actual dollars going to the bank account would be the equivalent, as if they were getting a wage, if that's how they prefer to be paid.
Oh, okay. So, 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 so if we paid every paycheck, it, it, it's, you know, kind of just semantics, but it'll, it'll, but it will break out as a stipend. They'll say stipend with the extra amount, the dollar amount, I got you, yeah, yeah.
Would be just one.
Gotcha.
We got all that, gonna be, I'm thinking, one, this town, we're third, doesn't go into a, so, that's what I was looking for clarity.
Well, like I said, if you want it in every paycheck, it would be spread across 26 papers. If you want it in a different frequency, we can do that. I mean, Roche and I had the conversation and ultimately landed on, what is it you would prefer? I mean, as long as it's not, say, that's probably not right for the town to give you the whole thing in the first pay period and say, here you go. As you pointed out, if you left, that wouldn't be fair. Probably wouldn't be fair to wait till the last pay period. But in terms of the council, the money's there. That really becomes an internal procedural.
Yeah, just, okay, yeah. Yeah.
Monitoring the hours, and what was, it's supposed to be paid on Friday, and it's not matching off with what you're saying.
Well, that's, that's this fiscal year. That's a whole, that's a different issue, but then this budget, but this is going forward after July 1st, so. Yeah. Yeah.
That's sort of what happens the last thing to go around, and then, like, you gotta be on the line.
Yep. So, okay. Tim, you gotta, you, Mike. You gotta come up on the mic. Sorry. Sorry.
As I understand it, we set aside $10,000 for a stipend for next year. That's in this budget we're voting on tonight. And then we had an additional 2,500 for this year. So I would say at this point, go ahead with the budget tonight, and we can hash out the rest of it afterwards, as far as how it's gonna work, because there's no point in going over this over and over again, because it's not getting anywhere tonight. It's not gonna change the budget.
Yeah, no, as long as the dollars are in the budget, that's the key.
Or finance, or, or however they want to do it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
The numbers have to change, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're getting their stipend Friday. Yeah, yeah. And then, and then we'll, and then the next year, the money's in the budget for the next year. How we pay it out, we can figure that out with payroll, of course.
You know, monitor your hours and what's gonna be. And like they said, maybe it won't be as intense this summer. Maybe, you know, you can back off.
So your lips to God's ears.
Yeah, well, I hear you.
Just one other thing I want to draw to your attention. This is a separate matter, but I just want to come to the council on it, is that this early voting has really opened our eyes, there's a lot to our space, and what we need to do moving forward and going into November. The space that we have at the registrar's office is not adequate. We actually need to get another two people into our back room. We have barely two people now. But the state is looking for us to have four computers back there, so four people can be working with us. So we're, as you're looking at the town hall, space is being moved around. I really think we need to try to find a larger space, not too far away from the clerk's office, though, because we really need to, to be near them with absentee balloting and custody of different ballots. But I just want to sort of put that out there, because I think it's gonna-
Look at that.
And if we could somehow get that settled out for November's election, that'd be great, because early voting really messed up with the Doc MacIntosh Room. And if we do get a bigger turnout than what we had, which was pretty minimal, but if we start to get a lot of congestion, I think there'll be a lot of unhappy people at the town hall.
What, what were the figure, the total vote, voters? Do you have it off the top of your head, just? How many voters total voted? Okay.
For early voting.
Early voting, early voting. 70 for early voting, and the total was 690?
But you had two primaries, so you gotta break it out according to the primary.
Yeah, oh, okay.
That's where, you always have to remember, there was two elections.
Yes, so.
For like, early voting, I think, the total number for, I, we have the numbers down there. Yeah, it's around, it's like, say, the 50s. You know, it was, we had, we had the numbers, I, I-
Yeah, it was like 50.
Come on, she had it off the top of your head. Come on, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
And what I, I guess what I'm stressing is that presidential one is gonna be huge.
Yeah, that's different, we know that.
More traffic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna have congestion of people in the town hall.
No, we'll figure that out, so.
And what's what the importance is to make it-
So we didn't have a lot of voters this time.
I'm gonna post the figures anyway tomorrow.
Okay.
On the website.
Yeah.
So we just finalized them before this meeting tonight. And then what I'll do is I'll also email it directly to you guys, so that you see the numbers. But this was a very small turnout for presidential preference primaries. It was a foregone conclusion.
Yes.
On who the candidates were gonna be.
And it's new to early voting, too.
And it is. And, you know, for other primaries that we've gone through, and, you know, especially 2020 was in June because of the pandemic, but 2016, those were higher turnouts, but it was more of a, you know.
Raise.
Yeah.
So do, do you think, like, this one, we could have just used one voting location on April 2nd?
You know, as far as the town referendum goes, or, or just for-
No, for the, for this primary.
I, I think we could have.
So can we, maybe we'll plan for that next time? That would save a lot of resources?
Well, I have to do it, I'm sorry.
No.
So we've, the referendum is totally different.
That's different.
Charter.
That's different.
Okay.
Not, not the-
For the presidential preference primaries, you could have gone down to one location, is what the mayor is asking.
Yes.
And towns did do that. Like, my town has nine, but we went down to three, so you were allowed to do that.
Yeah.
I don't know in a, like, if there's a primary in August, because you have to have it according to the races.
Yeah, oh, the race, yeah, right.
For some reason, it's the 83rd.
Yeah.
You gotta make sure that you have it in that district.
Could be different.
So there are other things to consider, right?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's another, like, my town did mail out to all the voters that their location had changed, but it's an expense.
Right.
Especially the cost of mailing, right?
But it's an expense to run three voting places, too. So, yeah, yes, sir.
Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, it's okay. You made it. You got the, the rowboat out, and you rode it? Yeah, okay, good.
We, is, do you need privacy when they vote, or could they use the vestibule?
No, they have to have a designated privacy area, and it has to be where no one can see how they cast their vote.
Okay.
So we set up the little polling, you know, the little voting station, so that the blinds were closed and their back was to the blinds, but anyone who walked in front of them would not be able to see them cast their vote because of the privacy shields.
Thanks. The other thing I did know, being an early voter that I was, that the envelope into the machine was not perfected, not very friendly at all. As I tried to poke my finger to push it in, and one of the ladies gave me a pen to try and push it through, but it, it was quite cumbersome. If it was crowded on Saturday, it would have not been good, probably, because the more envelopes-
You would have thought that you were stuffing it, because-
I really had to try and stuff it in the box there. Is there a bigger opening? Okay, it just, it's, it, yeah.
There was some confusion, and that's why the thing switched around, but I'm all for the bigger.
Yeah, the opening was, it was kind of, kind of interesting.
Don't forget, this was the first time that we've done-
Of course, no, I get it, I get it.
So the-
I get it, yeah.
The fact that it went as smoothly as it did was-
No, it was fine. I just, you know, we, we, well, we learned some things, which is what we wanted to accomplish, right? I mean, you know, and it wasn't that crowded, so we could learn things, and Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your time. Thank you for the consideration. Thank you, Roche, for helping out, and Kate, and-
Figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out moving forward, yeah.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks. Good night. And, and would you, just, the referendum, we need, we need three, right, per?
Yeah, according to the charter, we have to use all voting.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
In districts.
Yeah, the other one, we, the others, we could decide. Yeah, okay. Okay, well, we got that taken care of. So, Audience of Citizens, we're still in the Audience of Citizens. Yes, yes, sir.
Almost not to take up too much.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Cornell Budria, 115 Skinner Road. You know, dovetailing on the registrar of voters, I, I hope they're getting equitably paid in this budget. If this is one thing we need to make sure that we're doing is we're taking care of our voting system and our registrar of voters, what they're worth is least we can do. But I'm here to, tonight, to advocate for the school district. There's a 2.75% increase on the board right now. It's less than last year's initial offer of, I believe, 3%. 2.75 doesn't even keep up with the rate of inflation. It's not even half of what the BOE had asked for, their approved budget. I mean, I'm asking the council to reconsider. They've been proposed, reject it, take it to joint conference, add back on. I think that there's will there amongst every counselor to properly fund school districts. This budget does not do that. And I hope that the council reconsiders what's in front of them, rejects the budget, takes it to, to conference, and raises it. That's my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Audience of citizens, anyone else, either here or on Zoom? All quiet? Okay. All right, going once, going twice, going three times, okay? We'll head and close the Audience of Citizens, and we'll just go right into our, let's go to our new business, our meeting agenda, which is the budget.
All right.
We're here.
Good evening, councilors. So to recap, I won't go through entire budget presentation. The town manager budget submission through the Board of Finance in March was 106,765,155, or a 7.2% increase from the year before. And the Board of Finance worked tirelessly over before meetings to make some adjustments by 3,942,612, brought it down to 102,822,534, which is a 3.2% overall increase. The, what's in the motion here that we are requesting from you is to send the two budgets to referendum. The town budget is a 50,574,42, or a 3.72% increase. The Board of Ed is 52,252,492, or a 2.75 increase from the year before. And of course, there's the water control budget that is separately, 8,287,469, which is an enterprise fund, does not affect the taxes mail rate. Any questions, we're getting.
Okay, folks, well, what do you folks want to talk about? Obviously, we have options. We have send it forward to the to the referendum on April 30th. We have reject it, or lower it. I mean, we could lower it, we could lower it, of course. Reject it, and which would send us back to, to the to the meeting between Board of Finance and, and ourselves and vote through there. We need a super majority on that one, so we can't raise it, though. That's one thing we cannot do, so what are we all, what are we all thinking? Yeah, okay. Both, all of it?
Well, obviously, the water control budget, we could probably vote on that. Start with the easy.
No, let's fight on that one. No, 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 all right, yes, of course, yes, yes.
I'm gonna vote no, reject it, and go back to joint session. I mean, I, my concerns are the fact that what is proposed doesn't even cover contractual obligations that were negotiated and I think approved by the town council as part of the negotiation. And, you know, pencils and pens and books and everything else, they don't cost less these days, they cost more. So to not be growing the education budget at all, and what we're doing and shrinking it, I just think it's a recipe for disaster for the long-term health of a community to not invest in education. So I'm gonna vote no.
When we come to the vote? When I vote, we'll, we'll vote, but let everyone say their, so next? Anyone? Who's next? Comments, questions, Mark?
I just, I'm looking at, I looked at the budget extensively, and I, I agree. I know there's some cuts that they, you know, especially on the Board of Ed, they said that- I know there's some cuts that they, you know, especially on the Board of Ed, they said that they, they were making. But where we're at right now, I, I do believe they need more money to function properly. And so I'm kind of in the same boat that Kate is and she expressed it pretty well. So that's my stand and also on the overall budget, I think that, you know, they're a little bit low there too, so.
And the board, so, so the Board of Ed versus the town budget, what do we think of the town? Just so we don't, you know, I mean, there's both we need to probably talk about, but. What do you, so low for both or low?
Low for both.
For both. Okay. Peter?
They said what I was gonna say. Just let me add that. We're not even keeping up with the rate of inflation and.
Oh, get the button.
We're not even keeping up with the rate of inflation with this budget. And I'll say it again. I know everyone's sick of hearing me say this. While education may be expensive, ignorance is unaffordable. So for those reasons, I would urge, and also the town budget actually got cut. By having the same budget they had last year and not keeping up with inflation, that's a cut, as far as I'm concerned. So I would urge the vote no on both of those. I will go down fighting with the water budget.
I think the water budget's pretty much selfless for everyone.
Budget's the budget and the water budget. Okay, folks, what do we got, Charlie?
I'm gonna support we give this budget to the voters. I think the Board of Finance worked very hard and did a good job. It's never easy. And it's very hard for me to understand the Board of Ed's position because they're so tight with their information. They won't explain things and working behind the veil, it's hard for me to understand how they're moving the money around. And we're giving them a small increase, but we're giving them an increase on a budget that was bigger than what they needed last year. And how many years in a row have we done that? And I really don't understand how the money moves. And they've made it quite clear to the Board of Finance and the council that it's none of our business. So I'd like to send this to the voters and let them tell us what they think.
Okay. Got it.
Well, I have to say, we all know it's very important to fund everything that's sitting in front of us. Clearly, the Board of Finance has done a wonderful job, in my opinion, and I think from both sides of the aisle, if you will. I'd like to feel comfortable in trusting their judgment in terms of where we are and how they crunch the numbers. And Arosh, I believe, did a decent job. And when we asked him to try to cut back a little bit, he was able to do that. I think that it really does need to go to the voters. And if it's something that they can live with, then I think we should all be able to live with that. And if not, then it will come back to us. So I do believe in, you know, putting it out there and letting them vote. Certainly, I would love to give lots of money to the Board of Education. It's very important. But, you know, there's other things that have to be funded as well. And so we're trying to be equitable across the board, irregardless of what the department is. And, you know, it's a big nut. It's 63% of our budget goes to the Board of Education. That's a lot of money, guys. You know, we have to think about our seniors. We have to think about the programs that, that our town needs to fund and keep up with. So put it out to the voters and let them make the decision. And if they come back and they, and they vote against it and we have to move forward and do something else, then we'll have to readjust. So that's what I have to say.
Ms. Sandy, what do you got?
Last, huh? I would have to say that I would like to put it out to, to the voters in a referendum. Again, I think Board of Finance has worked very hard with this, you know, sat in a lot of the meetings and, you know, they crunch numbers. They talked to departments. They did, I think, a great job. You know, I agree, inflation has increased, prices of everything has gone up. But when I look at that, I also look at, you know, a lot of people on fixed incomes. Grocery prices, gas prices, insurance prices have all increased. You know, and again, yes, I think education is important. The town resources are important. But I think we need to try and keep it reasonable to where, you know, it, it makes it for easier for our senior citizens and, you know, those who are on a fixed income, you know, single families, single, you know, single moms out there. So I would like to, to put it out to the referendum and let the citizens decide whether or not they feel this is something that should go forward.
Okay. Okay. So you can, absolutely.
Everybody supported the water budget and I understand it doesn't affect the tax rate. But our customers in the water, the Berlin Water Department are actually subsidizing the other two water districts with this budget. And that's unfortunate because the other two water districts aren't paying their fair share to Mattabassett. So just a side note to the, to the folks that are trying to fix that, but this budget is, is kind of unfair to the local customers.
That is a problem. We, I guess, well, we've, I know we've tried to deal with it. Going forward, we will continue to try and deal with it, right? There's, I, I still don't understand why we front the money for the water districts, the other water districts who have their own collection and extra tax, which I'm not sure what that's ever for. I just know folks in those districts pay it all the time, the 1% tax beside the water bill. And they don't have enough money to pay Mattabassett. I'm, I'm, I'm not clear on that, where the money goes in those districts. Obviously, we don't control them. They're quasi-government created by the state and they're, they're their own entity. But we seem that we front the money for them until they decide to, to pay us back. That's the town. So we, we do subsidize them that way. And that seems like a very bad system. And I know we're working on it, talking to them. We've had meetings and we'll continue to work on that as far as the water budget goes. So yeah, Charlie, I agree. A lot of fixing needs to be done there. Easier said than done, unfortunately, but we'll work on it. So the budget, so, you know, I, I guess the, the thing about every year, it's pretty similar. Berlin's certainly not unique to, you know, the budget process. Every town around us and then the state goes through the same thing. But there always seems to be what I guess, you know, is tough to deal with is the misinformation that is out there all, all the time. And, you know, as far as the town budget versus the, first thing I just want to say is for the town budget and the Board of Ed budget. So, yeah, it's 2.75 this year. It's 3.72 to the town. We, we realized last year that the town got 0% increase and it was 3.6 to the Board of Ed. I think every, certainly every year since I've been here and, and well before me and, and this council, the Board of Ed generally got more than the town budget, always, which is why they're at 63%. And 63%, of course, is the operating budget, which is the 52 and change. And it's the Department 61, which is the facilities, which is, you know, we're putting in millions of dollars into HVAC and, you know, there are other capital projects that we, the town pays for. But of course, it's for the benefit of our school system and the, and the benefit of the students that are there. And while we're talking about the benefit of the students, I, I always like that some folks, not everybody, holds the students up and uses the students as, I don't know, what, what, what they, how they use them is not a good way. Like for instance, this year, which they've done before, they haven't done it for a few years, they being the Board of Ed. I mean, what are the cuts gonna be? They're talking about cutting sports again. I mean, come on, you know, that's just gonna be a, what is it called? Gaslighting for the parents, cutting sports, freshman sports, McGee's sports. You know, I thought we got away from that, but I guess we didn't. They pick, you know, hot topic items like that and scare the parents, just like last year. Same thing last year. You know, this is from the Board of Ed's own presentation. You know, we're not making this up. So last year, we gave them 3.6%. They wanted 5.3, I think, last year they wanted. Six? Okay, so we gave them six, 3.6. So, and there was a lot of talk about cutting positions, right? So with the 3.6, this is their own document from their own budget presentation. They actually went up three positions. And I'm talking total positions in the school system. If we want to go just to teachers and certified staff, they went down by one. So they had, the year before, the current year we're in, they had 266.3, teacher certified staff. This year, they have 265.3, right? So if we look back to their chart at the same time last year, there were a lot of cuts that were there. If we didn't get to the five point or the six, whatever the top number was last year, whatever they asked for. And there were supposed to be a lot of unfortunate positions cut. But again, they were down one in that important category of teachers and certified staff. But overall, they went up three positions. So, and if I recall, that 3.6% did not meet their contractual obligations either, which has been every year. We have not met the contractual obligations increase, but they make it work. And, you know, in conversations with the President of the Board of Ed and, and the superintendent, they move money around. And that's okay. That's what we do on the town side too. That's kind of how it works. You know, if you have an overage in a county like this year, we're, I'm sure we didn't use up a lot of our snowplow money because it didn't snow. So some of that money, as we go through the year and there's things we have to fund, programs, projects in the town, we're gonna move some money around. We're gonna make some transfers through the appropriate channels. And they do the same thing. That's okay. So they met their obligations and had a surplus on top of it, as does the town. So, you know, I don't know. I, I just, it's very difficult to weed through what many times is presented. And not all from the Board of Ed, I, I don't mean just from them, but the, the stuff that gets out on social media from different folks, you know, wherever they're from, the facts don't support what is out there. There was no catastrophic damage to the school system when we gave them 3.6% last year. There was no cuts of staff. They went up by three people. So, you know, it's, it's very hard to figure out. This year, we're at 2.75 or it's a little bit less than last year. I would, I would guess if it go, when it goes to the referendum.
So why not just give them a 3.6 again if that's the case?
I mean, we can't just keep increasing it. I mean, my God, we're at 63%. So if we give them 3.6, we'll be at 70% of the town budget. Soon we'll be at 80%. I, I'm not sure. I, I guess if we need a new fire truck, we don't need to buy one, but that, that's, you know, I mean, they can't eat up our whole budget. And if they're doing well with what we're giving them every year, which they have, and by the way, over the last four or five years, we have increased their budget higher than anyone ever has. And, you know, that one chart as far as the per pupil spending, which sometimes gets downplayed by folks in the community. And that is what the Federal Department of Education and the State Department of Education goes by with how you're funding your school system. So we're at, this year now, we're at 20,064. We were, if I remember, three, four years ago at like 14,000 and change. So that's how much we have raised the funding to the Board of Ed by their own chart. And we're above Newington, Glastonbury, Farmington, Rocky Hill, Cromwell, Weathersfield. We're above them all in funding per pupil. I, you know, it's pretty impressive what we've done. If you go back 10 years, you're not gonna see that kind of increase. Granted, there was some inflation and so there were some higher budgets, but, and with that, what they've done with it is admirable. The test scores are up. I mean, we heard from, you know, the Board of Ed presentation, how well they're doing. They're doing a great job. It's a great school system. People are moving to Berlin because of our school system. There's no houses on the market because of our school system. We're not underfunding them. It seems to me we're funding them properly. And look at the numbers. We're not hurting them. We're certainly not hurting positions. They're going up. They're going up. They're not cutting anybody. The two cuts that they, that they listed on their thing was one guy retired, one guy resigned. But they still only lost one position in the teacher category from year to year, from last year to this year. And we heard, but we heard that same thing. We're gonna cut, you know, all these positions. And they found the money to fund them, which is, which is wonderful, which is what we want, which is how it works. And to come back this year and tell us you're gonna cut sports, I mean, come on. You're, you're just, that, that's just wrong. You're using the students now. You're not protecting them. You're using them to get more money. And that's not right. Because that, that's one, you know, listen, we're a sports town. Most towns are in Connecticut. To, to, to use them to whip up the parents is, to me, just wrong. That's just not right. And here we are again, looking at cutting sports. So, you know, I just, I wish we could have honest conversations between the council and the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance. I know we're working on it and we're trying to work on it. Talked to Julie all the time, Benigni, talked to Sal, talked to the Board of Finance. We're, we're trying to work on it and get it, get it where we can kind of, you know, work together and really come up with a number that works. And, and it's still different in any town. They, they have a chart in there with all the proposed budgets for surrounding towns and a lot of towns. And I, you know, I talked to my, the fellow mayors around here, Weathersfield, Rocky Hill in particular. I talked to Cromwell. They all go through it. It's the same. But obviously, what's requested, no one's getting that. No schools, no, no school budget, whatever the Board of Ed in any town in Connecticut, or probably anywhere else for that matter, requests, they're not getting, just like the town doesn't get what they ask for either. I mean, we have to go through it. We have to be fiscally responsible. Don't forget, with all, the, the last eight years I've been here, we've been, you know, dealing with a large debt that of over $100 million of debt to our town, 10 million in our pension fund. We've been paying that down too. Even with that legacy that we've corrected, we've been able to increase the Board of Ed budget significantly. I mean, we're talking 6,000 more per pupil in about four years. And the town has probably suffered a little bit for it. But it hasn't suffered where I heard some, someone at the, at the town budget meeting, mentioned that nothing's getting done in town. That, you know, we're not fixing anything, blah, blah, blah. I mean, couldn't be further from the truth. I mean, we've been fixing roads, the bridges, the dam, buying new, we bought what, four new fire trucks, new police radio systems, on and on and on. We, we all know what we've done. So even with the limited town budget increases, which have been less, other than this year, they have been less for many years. We're still getting things done on the town level. And that's because we do, we do it responsibly and we move the money around if we have to. And the Board of Ed's doing that too. And again, that's okay. That's good. We're funding things properly. And if they've got a surplus here and they got a deficit in this account, they're paying for it. I mean, they, they, you know, the Board of Ed explained that in our joint meeting. So I don't know. I, I just don't see, every year, we kind of get the information that we're falling off some fiscal cliff for the Board of Ed. It's not happening. It's a wonderful school system and other towns recognize it too. Again, I talk to the mayors about this all the time. So, and they're all good school systems in our area. We're very fortunate to have what we have. And they do a great job at, at what they do. The budgeting, you know, hats off to the staff at the Board of Ed and to the town, to the managers of the town. Because we're doing pretty well in Berlin. And I, you know, I always like to keep it positive. We always seem to turn negative with things. It's very positive in the town of Berlin. And I think our budgets are pretty fair. And there is that tax mill rate. One last point, and I'll shut up. But, you know, we had a pretty, we had the revale last year and I think we were probably had an average for the residential homeowners, about an 8% increase to their tax bill, pretty significant. You know, and that's because of revale. There's nothing we could do, but we certainly, and we lowered the mill rate to offset it. We did the best we could. But a lot of folks had, you know, $1,000 increase on their house or more. And, you know, we, we ought to kind of offset that a little bit this year. We don't want to have another, you know, taxing, you know, huge tax increase. I think with this budget, we're at a, what, about a 3.2% increase total, I think, 0.65 mil increase maybe? 0.65 mil increase, maybe, less than, less, is that about right? So, we gotta think of our taxpayers, and we don't often think, and I've heard people certainly say, you know, you know, Peter, you know, I get it, we're all for educating our youth, and of course, it's important, but we have seniors to take care of too. We have social services, we have the fire department, as I mentioned before, we have many other things that we need in our town. We have to increase the police department, right, we've increased their budget a little bit for the for the pension plan, so we could hire new officers, so we could find new officers, because we couldn't find them with the system we have. And there's a lot of other services we need to fund as well, or it won't be a town, it won't matter what the board of ed gets, because there won't be any town left. So, we, we, and it's hard to balance, I don't mean it's easy, it's not easy for any of us up here, and the board of ed, board of finance, we're all volunteers, and it's a lot of work, and it's, it's tough to, you know, get together and work it all out, as with all of other boards and commissions, so, you know. But I, I just, I, I always like to keep it positive, we're doing very well. And I think the board of ed's doing well, and I think the town's doing well, and I, I think at this point, you know, this budget's pretty fair. Let it go to referendum, let the folks tell us what they want, that's how it should be. And we'll make adjustments, I'm sure there will be adjustments, and I'm sure, pretty sure as I sit here, the adjust, adjustments will be, you know, hopefully positive for both the town and and, and the board of ed, I mean, that's typically, if you look at every budget vote, that's what has occurred. Mostly, so.
Did I ask for a roll call vote?
We're gonna do that now, that's where we're at. So vote to send this budget forward. Yeah, but it, so, what are we doing, Kate, we doing three different votes, or?
Do you want it, I think you kind of all know where you're going, like, you want to just vote?
Yeah, that'd be the best way to do it.
Sure.
So I would suggest that you first, fourth, the board of ed vote.
So we'll make a motion for that, Charlie.
Move to send a fiscal year 2025 board of education budget of fifty-two million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, ninety-two dollars to a budget referendum on April thirtieth.
Second on that? All right, thank you, any other comments or questions? Everybody know we'll go take a vote on that? Roll call, yeah.
Councilor Atkinson?
Nay.
Councilor Capola?
Yes.
Councilor Peonesa?
Yes.
Councilor Prusen?
Nay.
Councilor Russell?
No.
Councilor Vich?
Yes.
Mayor Krasinski?
Yes.
Motion is to go forward to the referendum. So the next one would be the general?
Move to send a fiscal year 2025 general government budget of fifty million, five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars to the budget referendum on April thirtieth.
Second on that? Thank you, okay, we'll go ahead and vote on it.
Councilor Atkinson?
Nay.
Councilor Capola?
Yes.
Councilor Peonesa?
Yes.
Councilor Prusen?
No.
Councilor Russell?
No.
Councilor Vich?
Yes.
Mayor Krasinski?
Yes.
Motion passes to move it to budget referendum.
I guess I didn't talk long enough, I should have should have worn them down more, but that's all right.
We'll get you in the water.
What's that?
Ready for the next one?
Water budget.
Move to send a fiscal year 2025 water control budget of eight million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars to the annual budget referendum on April thirtieth.
Thank you, roll call.
I just want you to know that that's part of the town's budget on the ballot.
Oh. Okay, it's not separated, right, it's in the town's budget, that's right, that's right, it's in the town budget, so, do we, do we even need a vote?
No, but you got the motion.
Oh, we get the motion, what the heck, what's another motion at this point?
It's the only thing we're gonna agree on.
Yeah, so, okay, let's, let's do it then, let's send in a positive no, as I said, let's be positive, yes, yes.
You convinced me.
Bless you.
Councilor Atkinson?
Yes.
Councilor Capola?
Yes.
Councilor Peonesa?
Yes.
Councilor Prusen?
Yes.
Councilor Russell?
Yes.
Councilor Vich?
Yes, we could have started a consent calendar with that.
Yeah.
Mayor Krasinski?
Oh, should I say no, I mean, yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes, I'm, I'm with that.
You're welcome.
All right, so that's it?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, let's have motion, second on that, who's in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, all right, so moved, thank you all, thank you very much, appreciate everybody's time and everybody's comments. Now, the voters, let the voters decide.